We will now proceed to isolate for now the paper. Secretary General.
Motions for which notice has been given.
Honorable members, we have three standing committee reports for debate today. I now call on the Chairperson of the Standing Committee on Social Affairs, the Honorable Riliya Savanawal, to move the first motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, sir. I move that Parliament debates the consolidated review reports of Lotoka City Council 2015-2017 annual reports. It was tabled on the 11th of March 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Honorable Speaker, I second the motion.
You are pleased, second? I now invite the Chairperson of the Standing Committee on Social Affairs to speak on his motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, sir. The Speaker, I rise to speak on the motion of the consolidated review reports of Lotoka City Council 2015-2017 annual reports. The committee in its deliberations of the report was informed of that strategic focus of Lotoka City Council. One, the continuation of the best solid waste management practice, three R. Two, the establishment of the recognized standard supporting infrastructure. Three, enhancing integrated approach with relevant stakeholders. Four, the extension of municipal service with its right resources on capacity approach. The Speaker, number five, implementation of the climate change, sister risk management components into its development plan. The Speaker, significantly, the key findings and recommendations were highlighted during the deliberation of the report and the site visit that was conducted. One, on its financial management report, rate arrears. Three is the city security plan, and number four, the infrastructure development of the municipality. The committee anticipates that the recommendation by the committee will assist the council in its service delivery mandated by the rate payers. On that note, I thank you, Honorable Speaker, sir.
Thank you, honorable member. I now bite the floor for the debate, and I have a list with me. There are six speakers, seven speakers, the matching list. The time allocated, I've five minutes on this matter. The weeps had voted on the speaking times. And the Honorable Manivalu and the Honorable Nokwato had voted in favor, one against, and there have been two votes in favor of five minutes. I have decided that minutes will be kept, five minutes will be given to each of the speakers. Right? I'll call first on the Honorable Assistant Minister Ratu Josai Nyundamo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, sir. Mr. Speaker, sir, I rise to contribute to the consolidated review report of the Lotoka City Council 2015 to 2017 annual reports. At the outset, Honorable Speaker, I wish to take this opportunity to thank the Chair of the Social Committee and the members of the committee for very well and thorough research and the report that has been provided to this Oga's House. However, Mr. Speaker, sir, it's, the report is quite an outdated report. It is really not a good reflection of the then Minister of Local Government and the previous administration of the Lotoka City Council during this period of review. Mr. Speaker, sir, the Lotoka City Council is a vibrant and forward-focused and agile municipal organization. They declared a city in 1977 approximately forty-four thousand residents make Lotoka their home and about four thousand people come from outside to work in the city. Mr. Speaker, sir, the city has eight thousand one hundred and sixty-three rate pairs, and it is housed the government departments and statutory bodies in the Western Division, and is also known for us in the people from the West as the administrative capital of the Western Division. Mr. Speaker, sir, well-known as the sugar city, the sweetest city in Fiji, Lotoka is vibrant city with a strong community value, quality lifestyle, and dynamic investment opportunity, and it's a desirable place to live, work, and visit. As a song from my naita in Rewa, the Kena Ser Reda usually sing, and I want to quote, "Lotoka ne kuro ni korole wewiti, nandi le wusaki mendiwe." Unquote, Mr. Speaker, sir. Lotoka has the largest sugar mill, central bulk storage, loading facility, and is a second port of entry. Apart from this, there are a number of other industries, such as timber, pine chips, garments, distillery, brewery, blending, steel, fishing, hatchery, and many more. Mr. Speaker, sir, the committee noted that for the period under review from 2015 to 2017, the Auditor General issued a disclaimer opinion for all over these years. The committee noted that Lotoka City Council failed to comply with the relevant financial regulations. Some of the findings of the committee is that the Lotoka City Council has a very high rate of arrears, which currently sits at ten million. It was also noted that there is a rise of criminal activities within the municipality, and there needs to be a plan for a more secure, safer, peaceful, and welcoming environment within municipality areas. Mr. Speaker, sir, rates collection is the major revenue earner for the Lotoka City Council and other municipal councils around Fiji. Lotoka City Council is heavily dependent on the rates to fully and effectively deliver its services to the rate payers. The delay in rate payments is hampering the ability of municipal councils to deliver services and carry out major projects, and therefore, Lotoka City Council has to continue its efforts to reduce outstanding rate arrears. I wish to thank the Ministry of the Local Government for currently aligning to the government's commitment in recovering every dollar owed, ensuring that municipal councils can reinvest in the communities that need it most. Mr. Speaker, sir, some of the implementation and strategies for the council has to encourage rate payment and collections so that the development and maintenance of strong infrastructure in our city is continued. Mr. Speaker, sir, I'm also asking the Lotoka City Council to encourage community engagement in carrying out effective crime prevention in the city. Councils should make sure that villages like Namoli, Vitongo, Navyang, Lawaki, and Wunda and the nearby communities are actively involved in the fighting against crime in the city of Lotoka. Mr. Speaker, sir, the locals have to take ownership of the city. Sir, before I resume my seat, I wish to take this opportunity to thank the Toke Vindilo of the Bonov Namoli, Berlewui Sukunadang in the Bonov Vitongo, and the Bonov Wunda for their unwavering support and warm hospitality in welcoming all the people from the other thirteen provinces in Fiji who have called Lotoka their home. With those few words, Mr. Speaker, sir, I support the motion before the House.
I thank the Honorable Ratu Josai Nyundamo. I now invite the next speaker, Honorable Parvin Bala.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, sir. Mr. Speaker, sir, I rise to contribute to the review report of the Lotoka City Council. I'll just go straight on the key findings, Mr. Speaker, sir. Three point one, review of the legislation. The committee noted that the Local Government Act needs to be reviewed to better control the activities of all municipalities. The Speaker said, while we were at the council, we were told that there is a review that is being done by the Ministry for Local Government. But what I found out, there is no such review at this point in time. But I would like when Minister will have his chance to respond to confirm whether the local government is under review, the act itself. Mr. Speaker, sir, if it is yes, if there is a review, then what is the timeframe for the review? Mr. Speaker, sir, on three point three, collection of rate areas, the committee noted the increase in the rate areas, which currently sits at around ten million. Mr. Speaker, sir, I understand when special administrators were appointed, they were given certain responsibilities to be carried out, and one such responsibility was to reduce the rate areas. I want to ask the Honorable Minister that here, the report says that the in, there is an increase in the rate areas. So what action the Honorable Minister has taken on the special administrators of Lotoka failing in their duty? Mr. Speaker says on the flood mitigation, this was not happening before. But now, when we have heavy downpour of rain, we have certain locations in Lotoka where it's flooded. And when we were at the council, see, this blame game is not going to solve the problem. We were told that this is the responsibility of Fiji Roads Authority. Maybe. But at the end of the day, the rate payers, they know their respective councils. And they rely and depend on the respective municipal councils. So I urge the minister to sort out this issue between the Fiji Roads Authority and the municipal council so that we can stop with this blame game. Three point six, Mr. Speaker, sir, extended rural boundary services. The committee noted that the council provides services to the extended rural boundary for garbage collection. The committee further notes that there is insufficient funding to cater for the extended rural boundary services. The Speaker said, it's not only Lotoka, there were other councils who told us that they don't have that type of fund to carry out this exercise. We are talking about environment, we are talking. Before, we used to have beautification competitions. Now it's not there. And these are all the cause of this Dengi outbreak in Western Division. There needs to be a massive cleanup campaign, Mr. Speaker. So I urge the line minister to seek some funding from the Minister of Finance because we heard he has got a lot of money, so please give to the councils. Ministry of Waterways government grant. Lotoka City Council used to receive government grant from Ministry of Waterways for improvements to undertake damage trains, which is now being seized. Now, that funding is also being stopped. I'm not saying it's the city council who is saying to us, to the committee, that all this funding has been stopped, and they are unable to carry out all these services. And I would like to urge the line minister to see that if he can reinstate this funding so that the council can carry out their works. Mr. Speaker, sir, on the recommendation there is here that Lotoka City Council to work closely with Fiji Roads Authority, Ministry of Waterways, and other stakeholders to address issues, et cetera, and et cetera. We were at few councils, and we were told that they have made a submission to Fiji Roads Authority to get back all the services that has been provided by Fiji Roads Authority now. I mean, they have huge problem, and now they want to get the maintenance of street lights, upgrading of roads, which Fiji Roads is doing. The council wants to get that back. And I suggest to the minister, and I strongly suggest that this be stopped. Mr. Speaker, sir, lastly, which is very important.
You've got half a minute to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, sir. Mr. Speaker, sir, I seek clarification. The last time when the Local Government Act Amendment was brought into Parliament, during that process, section nine A was removed. Nine A spells out on the appointment of special administrators. Now that is gone, and I don't think the minister has got any power left if there is a vacancy. So I want to ask. No, no, what I'm asking is, you will have a time to respond. What I'm asking is that there are some councils where there is vacancies.
Can you conclude your statement now?
There are some vacancies at the municipal council, Mr. Speaker, sir, but positions are not being filled. So I am asking that when removing nine A should have been considered. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I thank the Honorable Parvin Bala for his statement. I now call on Honorable Riniash Sharma.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, sir. I'd like to contribute to the report before the House. One of the key findings, and then what I found on page fourteen was the crime rate, Mr. Speaker, sir. In Lotoka Town, the need, there was, obviously, crime is, no city is free from the crimes. But what was suggested was that the cameras to be put in the hotspots of towns, especially the market area. And, Mr. Speaker, sir, from then to now, we still have a lot of drunkards, I guess. Drunkards is the word on Sunday mornings at Marine Drives when people go for a walk or with their families. And that is something that I am putting forward to the Minister for Policing and the whole of Police Department. Mr. Speaker, sir, again, business owner shared with me there's a particular street in Lotoka Town opposite the market where he said people are sitting outside my shops and it's causing customers not to enter my shop. But unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, sir, just across the road is the Market Police. And still, that street is being being, people are there who are in front of stores that they shouldn't be there, Mr. Speaker, sir. Mr. Speaker, sir, looking at page twelve of this report, in fact, I had an eight-minute response, but I'm trying to shorten it down to five minutes. The stray dog issue, Mr. Speaker, sir, continues. Once the dogs are trapped, they're handed over to the Ministry of Agriculture, and other future interventions like neutering and, as per the assessment, can be done. It's an ongoing issue, and I think the greater good foundation in animal shelter and hospital and the NGOs and activities and other organizations who run pilot projects are helping the Ministry of Agriculture. Mr. Speaker, sir, pets should be licensed, and it's the responsibility of the owner. What happens in other cases is that newborns are usually thrown away or thrown at rubbish dumps. And people need to take responsibility if you own pets. Animal abuse, Mr. Speaker, sir, and I think I've spoken to AG and putting attention to government for the enforcement of the Protection of Animals Act nineteen fifty-four, and to the public, if you see animal abuse, please approach the Fiji Police Force and lodge a complaint. Mr. Speaker, sir, also to highlight the termite issue, which has, what they say, began in the Western Division, and the issue is growing. The government in their first year, Mr. Speaker, sir, allocated three million grand, and in the second year, two million grand. It's a growing issue. It has grown to Nandi, Ba, Tavua, and even coming to Suva in a few years' time, or it has come, Mr. Speaker, sir. The government needs to allocate more funding for this. Mr. Speaker, sir, also putting it to government to look into the suppliers who supply untreated timber at the price of treated timber. These are the ones that you immediately need to go down to and investigate. Mr. Speaker, sir, the western conditions haven't changed much, and I believe that the repair works will start very soon. Students loitering around, traffic congestion remains an issue. Parking also remains an issue, Mr. Speaker, sir, especially between Ba, Lotoka, and Nandi, the traffic concessions are really, really terrible. And then this government is also struggling to fill potholes and cut overgrown grass throughout Fiji. So it's quite an achievement of absolute incompetence on their part, Mr. Speaker, sir. Potentials of sports facilities, Mr. Speaker, sir. There's a lot of potential in income generation for the council, but there seems to be not much investment in sporting facilities. And, Mr. Speaker, sir, speaking of youth empowerment, fifty-five seconds. The Minister for Youth and Sports said, "I don't come to youth conferences." Well, I was invited to the AG's conferences. At least some ministers are kind enough to send an invite. So don't talk about leaving no youth behind, Mr. Speaker, sir. And lastly, Mr. Speaker, sir, Lotoka is a sports city and has huge potential for boosting Fiji's multiple sports. And for government, on the road to completion of the Lotoka swimming pool, the coalition government is struggling to swim and navigate through their empty promises, and we hope to see the completion of the pool very soon. I support the motion before the House, Mr. Speaker, sir. Thank you.
I thank the Honorable Riniash Sharma. I next call on Honorable Alipati Fidolo.
Mr. Speaker, I rise to make a short contribution on the motion moved by the Chairperson of the Standing Committee on Social Affairs, Honorable Riliya Savanawal, on the consolidated review report of the Lotoka City Council twenty fifteen, twenty seventeen annual reports. Mr. Speaker, before I go any further, I take this opportunity to thank the Chairperson and the members of the Standing Committee on Social Affairs on the work they do by scrutinizing the annual reports of the years in review and compiling the consolidated review report, which highlights the committee's key findings and recommendations. Being the country's second-largest city with an estimated population of forty-four thousand residents and occupying a land area of one thousand six hundred hectares, Mr. Speaker, it is important that the Lotoka City Council consider the committee's recommendation and implements it accordingly as it will improve the economic development of Lotoka City and also create more opportunity and a better way of life for its population and increase the collections of funds that will improve municipal service delivery. Mr. Speaker, I noted that the consolidated committee report highlights eleven key findings and nine recommendations. Mr. Speaker, in one of its findings, the committee highlighted the increase in rate arrears, which currently sits at ten million eighty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. Mr. Speaker, the city rates provide a major revenue stream for municipal councils. This tax is levied by local councils to fund various services and infrastructure within their jurisdiction and enables them to invest in and enhance services for residents, ultimately improving the quality of life and the overall economic health of the city. Mr. Speaker, this is an ongoing issue for the Lotoka City Council and most of the municipal councils around the country. Mr. Speaker, there are several reasons that contribute to rate payers defaulting in payments, on payments. This includes financial difficulties, perceived lack of services, owner absence, and other circumstances, lack of capacity for financial management. Mr. Speaker, the COVID-nineteen pandemic and related economic downturns have significantly impacted many Fijians, leading to financial hardship and making it difficult for some to keep up with rate payments. Mr. Speaker, some rate payers may be reluctant to pay if they feel the services provided by the council are not adequate or if they perceive a lack of value for their rates. Mr. Speaker, rate payers who are away facing short-term financial difficulties or embroiled in legal disputes may struggle to pay their rates. Mr. Speaker, municipal councils may face challenges in effectively managing their finances and collecting rates due to a lack of resources and expertise. Mr. Speaker, current accounting practices may not be adequate to track fraudulent activities or ensure rate collection. Mr. Speaker, accumulated rate arrears can put a strain on municipal council budgets, forcing them to borrow or reduce service levels. Mr. Speaker, with the issue of the increase in outstanding rate arrears, the committee has recommended that the Lotoka City Council continue its efforts in reducing the outstanding rate arrears and improve the collection of default rate payers. In doing so, Mr. Speaker, the Lotoka City Council should focus on proactive communication and engagement, early intervention, and don't wait until a payment is severely overdue, reach out to customers proactively, offering support and exploring payment options before they fail, fall behind, and maintain regular communication with customers, keeping them informed about their current status and upcoming due dates. Mr. Speaker, thank you for the opportunity, and I support the motion before the House.
I thank the Honorable Alipati Fidolo for his contribution. I call next on Honorable Ham Chan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, sir. I rise to speak on the report. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the Standing Committee on Social Affairs for the report and coming up with some good findings and recommendations. The key functions of Lotoka City Council are to promote and facilitate, number one, clean and healthy environment; number two, deliver services to meet local needs; number three, improve the quality of life and community well-being. Mr. Speaker, sir, one of the recommendations of the committee is maintenance of city parks. Parks are important for all age group because parks provide numerous benefits, including improved health, environmental protection, and provides recreational opportunities. There are hundred and five open spaces in Lotoka City, and many of these spaces need maintenance. Councils should attend to the parks which need maintenance. Mr. Speaker, sir, the other recommendation of the committee is flood mitigation. There are many areas in Lotoka city area which experience flash flooding during heavy rain, and this is due to blocked drains. I wish to name few places in Lotoka which experience flash flooding, and these are Kashmir area and the frontage of Tapu City. That's right in the city. We cannot put people, especially children, at risk. The city council should work closely with the Fiji Roads Authority and Ministry of Waterways to address the issues of blocked drains. Mr. Speaker, sir, I have found in the report that Lotoka City Council used to receive government grant from Ministry of Waterways for the improvement to undertake drainage, which has now ceased. What is the reason? I do not know. I request the Minister for Local Government to request for funding on this. Mr. Speaker, sir, the other recommendation of the committee is on extended rural boundary services. Lotoka City Council provides services to extended rural boundary for garbage collection, and this is very good service to rural areas, which started about five years ago. A clean environment is vital for human health and well-being. It minimizes exposure to harmful toxins and pollutants, reduces risk of illness and infections. I have noted from the report that there is insufficient funding to cater for extended rural boundary services. I urge the Minister for Local Government to ensure that this important service continues, and I urge the Minister for Local Government and Finance to provide funding for garbage collection so that the area is not disadvantaged. Mr. Speaker, sir, another recommendation of the committee is on collaboration and networking. This is very important. The committee found that the Ministry of Local Government and the council, they need to improve on their coordination and collaboration in order to improve service delivery. Lack of coordination between the ministry and council should not affect the rate payers and the visitors. There are more than eight thousand rate payers in Lotoka, and the population of Lotoka is over seventy thousand. Mr. Speaker, sir, service delivery to rate payers and people of Lotoka should not be compromised. I urge the Minister for Local Government to ensure that there is good I urge the Minister for Local Government to ensure that there is good collaboration and networking between the council and the ministry to ensure that best services are provided to the ratepayers, people of Lotoka and visitors to Lotoka City. Mr. Speaker, say, another issue highlighted by the committee is on poor road conditions and malfunctioning street lights. I totally agree with the committee because I have noticed this myself because I'm from Lotoka. The way Lotoka City Council seems to be operating currently is in the manner of firefighting and solving matters when it becomes a problem rather than a more planned and systematic The malfunctioning street lights and the leakage of Lotoka market few months ago goes to show lack of planning and systematic approach. Mr. Speaker, say, had the council done its due diligence in terms of regular inspection, issues would have been picked up as part of the inspection and planned for repairs prior to it becoming a major problem for vendors and people of Lotoka. Mr. Speaker, say, the special administrators have special roles and they should solve some leadership and ensure that there is better planning and systematic approach so that best services are provided to market vendors, ratepayers, citizens of Lotoka and all visitors to Lotoka City, including tourists. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, say, for the opportunity. I support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I thank the Honorable Ham Chan for his contribution. I call next on the minister, Honorable Matthew Nalumisah.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, sir. Speaker, I rise to contribute to the motion for the House on the Consolidated Review Report of the Lotoka City Council and Reports for the period twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen. And I thank the committee and the members for doing a marvelous job in coming up with some very good recommendations. From the House, Mr. Speaker, sir, also wish to commend on few issues that were raised by the former Minister for Local Government, also part of the committee in the evaluating of Lotoka City Council. And first thing that came in was on the review of the Local Government Act. This is, I think, the third time that I'm stating this, August House, that we have done the first review of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two. This was done in twenty twenty-three and passed in Parliament in October twenty, Parliament in October twenty-three. So in that, in that review, we have repealed the nine A where we wanted to bring in the local government election and we have also amended the interest methodology in the, in the, the council's use in charging rates, regionaries, which is from compound to simple interest, as well as reducing the interest rate from eleven percent to five percent. The third thing they have done in that review, Bal Bal, sorry, Mr. Speaker, is we have also, also amended the retirement age for workers from fifty-five to sixty to be in line with the national age retirement policy. So I hope it's clear on that. And also going to further review our Local Government Act, as also I have also mentioned yesterday with the help of the local government in New Zealand, to modernize our town and cities, make sure that we come up with very sustainable employment policies now moving forward. Next one, Mr. Speaker, is if you look at some of the recommendations is the lack of the previous administration monitoring, monitoring some of these, most of the municipal council. What we have done based on, on the principle faced, difficulties faced by municipalities, we have established an audit and monitoring unit in twenty twenty-four to ensure that they monitor all the activities as well as a place and place in all these municipalities. That's a very important, important aspect that we have changed. And what the, the team has done, they have gone out, they've done action plan on some of the audit issues that have been, recurring audit issues and they have gone to councils to try and rectify this with all the, with all the municipal, municipalities across the country. Next one is on the areas. I've also mentioned, Speaker, what we have done to at least mitigate the effect of using compound interest in, in most of these municipalities. That's why we've reduced the interest methodology from compound interest to simple interest. And if we look at the performance of, with, and also, we have also stressed to all these administrators as well as CEOs of municipalities, the importance of looking after managing their rates because that's what the income drive, income drive of most of the municipalities. They, most of them have done the interest rate profiling. When you do profiling, you can come up with strategies of improving the, the collection rate of, of your municipalities. And I'll give an example, Mr. Speaker, sir. This effort, if you look at March twenty twenty-five collection compared to last year, it was three point four million compared to two point seven million last year. That is an increase of twenty-five point nine percent, Mr. Speaker, sir. So that's in itself is testament of the good work that these councils as well as administrators have been, have been putting across in most of these municipalities. Another issue that was raised by Honorable Bal is on, of issues of flooding around the Lotoka City Council. It was the previous administration that have taken away the responsibility from these councils to FRA as well as, as well as improving even also on what was in terms of managing flooding issues in some of municipalities. Now we are also, now we are mitigating that to try and include that in our next financial budget so that our municipalities are fully equipped with resources to ensure that they have right funding and also adequate funding to assist them in mitigating and assist in some of the areas that get flooded, most of the municipalities around the country. And nothing is on the ground, either given by government to assist in the rubbish collection for some of the extended areas, most of the municipalities, but something that also, have also been listening with the Minister of Finance to also give us a good additional funding to assist municipalities in servicing and collecting waste in these extended areas. And this is something that we are, we are closely monitoring the activities of municipal council, Mr. Speaker, sir, and we hope that we're going to accomplish some of the projects that was left behind by Honorable Bal in Lotoka City. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, sir.
I thank, I thank the Minister, Honorable Matthew Nalumisah for his contribution. Final speaker on the motion is Honorable Bian Pili.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker, say. Honorable Speaker, say, I rise to support the motion before us, which reflects the consolidated review report of the Lotoka City Council's twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen annual reports. While there is much to commend in this report, it also raises concern that demand urgent action from the council and government stakeholders. Honorable Speaker, say, Lotoka City Council's alignment with sustainable development goals is a step towards ensuring long-term resilience and sustainability for Lotoka. The council's focus on waste management initiatives such as composting, market waste and green waste chipping reflects an admirable commitment to goal thirteen climate action. Similarly, efforts to maintain clean and safe public spaces align with goal eleven, sustainable cities and communities. These initiatives are setting the foundation for Lotoka to evolve in a greener and cleaner city. However, Honorable Speaker, say, commendable progress alone cannot erase the fundamental issues that have been highlighted in this report and one of the most pressing concerns is the growing rate areas are now sitting at alarming ten million dollars as said by other honorable members. The council must adopt enforcement mechanisms and explore innovation solutions like incentivizing rate payments through discounts or digital systems. More community engagement is also needed, Honorable Speaker, say. The council must reach out to ratepayers and educate them on how their contributions are directly tied to improving their everyday lives. Honorable Speaker, say, I now turn to the parks and open spaces of Lotoka City. This report reveals that there are hundred and five open spaces, many of which remain underutilized or neglected. These spaces are vital assets that could serve as hubs for recreation, culture and community building, yet their potential remains unrealized. While the council has initiated collaborations with businesses and organizations for maintenance, these efforts lack agency and structure. Open spaces should not be idle plots. There should be vibrant, welcoming areas that reflect the pride and spirit of Lotoka. I strongly urge the council and government to prioritize this issue. Modern parks and recreational facilities can enrich the lives of the residents, foster physical well-being and boost local tourism. Sponsorship programs, partnerships with corporations and grants could help fund the development of inclusive spaces that cater to all demographic, from children to the elderly and even those with disabilities. Honorable Speaker, say, these are investments that will pay dividends for generations to come. Honorable Speaker, say, the report also highlights plans for retention dams and drainage system improvements, which I commend. However, these plans must be, must move beyond discussions and be implemented swiftly. Hygiene infrastructure and unethical waste disposal into the drains exacerbate the problem. The council must address these underlying issues. I urge the council to work closely with stakeholders, including the Fiji Roads Authority and the Ministry of Waterways, to ensure these projects are completed centrally and with long-term resilience in mind. With a few words, Honorable Speaker, say, I thank you for the opportunity.
I thank the Honorable Bian Pili for his contribution. I now call on the Chairperson of the Standing Committee on Social Affairs, the Honorable Lilia Sivana, to exercise his right of reply.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, sir. I thank all the honourable members for their constructive contribution to the debate on this report. The Speaker, say, all valid critical issues from the honourable members are noted and will be thoroughly discussed with the council. Their continuous improvement and benchmark for the best practices in its future development report. The committee will ensure that the execution of the recommendation and its key findings will assist the council on its service delivery. On that note, Mr. Speaker, sir, I command this motion before this August House. Thank you, sir, for the opportunity.
I thank the Chairperson of the Standing Committee on Social Affairs. The Parliament will now vote to note the content of the report. Does any member oppose the motion?
No.
None, as no member opposes the motion, it's agreed to unanimously. And now call upon the Chairperson of the Standing Committee on Foreign Affairs in Defence, the Honorable Lenora Gergen Gertamboa, to move the second motion.